Okay.
Everybody's attention. We're going to call this meeting to order on Monday, March 19th at the Apple seats at CT and I. And if everyone can please stand to say the pledge allegiance, and I believe it's outside today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, united, sovereign, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to read our Leventhal School Committee statement. The committee represents the needs of all Leventhal Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership and adhere to our protocol and base our decisions upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leventhal. With that, we are going to open up the public forum. If anybody would like to address the committee, you can come up to the microphone, state your name and address, please. A second time, if anybody would like to address the committee, please approach the microphone. And one last time, if anybody in the audience would like to address the committee, do so now. Okay, we're going to close that portion of the meeting, and we're going to move on to communications, Superintendent. There are no communications, is there? Thank you. How about Superintendent's report then?
Absolutely. First off, we had many events happening over the past few weeks, and the first that I'd like to recognize are the student-led forums last week in respect and reflection of those 17 victims in the Parkland shooting. There were events from the elementary on up through the high school that were supported by city departments, city leaders, students, parents, and community members at large. Students were respectful in acknowledging the need to have their voices heard, and we promoted and supported them through their efforts, and we will continue to do so. This is not the end of the conversation with our students, and we are setting up different forums in which to keep conversations going. We have some interesting events going on this week. One is the LEF, the Leventhal Education Foundation Dinner, which is this Friday night, which directly supports staff and students within the school with scholarships and projects. I would ask and encourage anybody that wants to come to come. I know that school committee members, some of you were able to make it, and anybody in the community, reach out to our pick center as soon as possible. We've already exceeded by about 80 or 90 seats from last year, so please join us on Friday night. I guarantee it'll be fun. We also, this weekend, right on top of it, have the All-City Musical, Sound of Music. Students from the middle schools are working endlessly this week to try to shore up their very important roles. There's a show on Friday night at 7:00, and there's also a showing on Saturday at 2:00 and another at 7:00. It is so worth your time, coming and bringing your families. And lastly, I will be speaking in a little bit to the enrollment of not only students but staffing, as we want to clear up some communications around staff joining the retirement board late. So in our enrollment, we will be speaking to that, and then moving into budgets. Thank you.
Is there a student report? I didn't see anyone, but I just wanted to.
Sure, I asked that question, just to back up what you said, Paula, on how moving the programs were on the 14th. I had a chance, I think we all did have a chance to see the film from Sky, Sam Asada. Just really well done and good recognition of that tragedy.
Yes. I think all the events were very thoughtful and well planned out. Really involved a variety of stakeholders, and they were certainly student-related, which is wonderful to see. A lot of very talented people. Yes. Okay. We're going to move into the calendar issues.
So, we have a couple of issues with the FY18 calendar. First and foremost is, on June 6th of this current spring, we had scheduled a half-day for professional development. And that is a state testing date that cannot be moved. We have to provide a full school day for students to take the test. These schedules come out after we put our calendar together. We're already anticipating we may have a similar issue for next year, but we don't want to lose the professional development day. We've already lost three due to weather. So we are asking if we can move the half-day with professional development to May 2nd, and we will have a full day of school on June 6th.
Is that something that is fine with the union?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with that, providing we make sure that all the parents and students are well aware of the change in the schedule?
Yes, absolutely. We will start now then.
Can I have a motion to approve the change?
I have a motion to change the program for instance. We will follow the question.
Second, any comment or question?
Moving the professional development day from June 6th to May 2nd.
Yes. And June 6th will be a full day of school, and May 2nd will be a half-day of school.
And that doesn't interfere with any MCAT testing?
No, we just checked on every level. We checked, we checked on senior exams.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second? All those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries? And then I do believe we have another calendar issue.
We have another potential calendar issue. So it looks like we're looking at another snowstorm, possibly this Wednesday into Thursday. Right now, the last day of school is scheduled for June 22nd, which is a Friday. If we have this snowstorm hit, it will take us over to the Monday, which will be June 25th. There also looks to be possible snow on this Saturday night as well. So we are asking if we can change the schedule and on Good Friday have a half-day of school for staff and students.
Because currently, it's a day off.
It's a day off.
And again, I know we've done this in the past, and if there was any family parent for reasons who did not want them, or your child, they clearly have that option to not send their child to school.
Well, we of course, we encourage all students to.
Yes, and we've reached out to our union presidents already and asked to communicate that. I spoke with the bus company today, and they need at least a three-day notice. So the sooner we can commit to this, the better.
So are you wanting to do that regardless of whether you have additional snow days? Or, because at this point, it's coming up in another week.
Right. So if I have to call Wednesday or Thursday, and/or Sunday, I want to hand that back up.
Do you think that there would be enough notice for parents to rearrange their schedules if we're waiting until Tuesday of next week to make that decision?
Yes.
Anybody else have any other answer questions?
I just moved that we make a new document. That way, we can come back and vote on it.
No, we'll be voting today.
Right, make it a new document, because as you said, depending on how the weather presents itself, the better.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I move that Friday, March 30th become a, is it half-day?
Half-day.
Half-day, if there is a snow day between that.
Do I have a second? Ron?
I'll second unless, you don't want to.
Any other thoughts or questions? I know you're just trying to speak. All those in favor? Opposed? I would just, you know, hope that we get the message out as soon as possible once that decision is finally made.
We'll start with the findings again.
Excellent. All right, does that end our calendar issues?
Just, we want to be able to schedule a public hearing for budgetary school choice, but I think maybe once we hear the budget presentation, we should decide on that. Just if you're all agree on it, we'll do it. Would you like to select a date now?
I mean, we need to take regardless of anything. Does Finance Chair have any thoughts?
From Finance's point of view, we're ready to go. Unless, unless the full school committee tonight has some reason to slow the process down, we're ready to move on to the public hearing. But I think we have proposed a document that has been presented to you in your package.
Looking at.
We have discussed dates, just.
People in the house said they can't hear anything that you guys were saying. You could speak to them. So are you thinking like, by Tuesday the 10th you'll be ready, or? I'm throwing that date out just because I'm doing that day.
Because you need seven days to put.
We probably don't want to do it the week of school vacation, the week which is the 16th. So you're really looking at probably the week of the 9th, potentially the week of the 2nd. You can be the same night as we did the school committee meeting. We've done that.
Yeah, I mean, the Finance Committee did not discuss the day. We could do it on the 2nd when we already have a meeting, or we could do it as a separate thing, in which case, the week of the 9th, as you were suggesting.
Any thoughts?
I would like to see it. I mean, too bad we don't have another meeting in April, because I'd suggest that. I think having it on the 2nd is a little close for us and the rest of the school committee to really study what we're passing out tonight. And if there's any questions, I think it's important that we allow time for that, which would give it till the 2nd. So I'm, I'm thinking if we could have a special meeting either the 23rd or the 30th for the public hearing.
Are we to read it? Opposed? Dean, what is your schedule?
23rd, I have opened, 30th.
Okay, so how about the rest of the committee? Can everybody make, I mean, April 23rd?
Yep.
All right, so let's do April 23rd. Here? And at what time? I don't think we need to wait until 7:00. There's not really a subcommittee ahead of time.
6:30.
So 6:30 is that's what we did?
Yep.
So we'll do 6:30 Apple seats on April 23rd. Great. All righty.
Same time, what? So I have to come in?
Oh, that's me. Yes, because we do need to get that done. We'll take care of that first, and then move into the budget.
I'm just, I know it's listed as FY18 calendar issues, but, you know, last meeting we had, we brought up graduation concern, and also there was a kindergarten concern, that kindergarten is going to be starting on September 4th.
I think that.
Yeah, so I think, has the calendar for next year been updated on the website?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
Excellent. So we have time for this. All right, so if there's nothing else with that, we're going to move to staffing report?
I just, I didn't know if we needed to vote on our choice of the hearing night scheduling. It's good.
Okay, so our presentation tonight actually has three parts. Enrollment has been driving all of our decision-making, and at the last school committee, Mr. Mayor, you had asked about some retirement, where our staffing was. Had we brought in 58 people, we may have had some conversations, trying to look at who we do have for staffing levels as it relates to our enrollment. So in your package tonight, we have created a comparison. And we have numbers from FY16, 17, 18, all October 1, and then I thought it was important to put FY18 as of March 14th, because the demographics look a little bit different within a short amount of time. And we captured the teachers, where we're at, our tutors, our paras, our UNB, our enrollment, and what seems to be driving our decision-making. HR's been working really closely with members of City Hall to find out where these retirement numbers are coming. We still have quite a few questions, because our hires are not matching the numbers coming out of the retirement board. Some of the things that we're noticing is that there are people on the list that were formerly a para, but now have a new job title as a tutor, but they haven't come on off the list, but have been added to the list. So it's not a difference in a, in a person or an addition, it's just a change in their function.
So they didn't drop the para and keep the?
They didn't drop them, but it looked, no, because we always submit goal forms every time you move a position. So we're questioning that piece. We're also wondering about people that have left the system that are still on the rosters that we've been working on of. We've noticed that there's employees from October, November, December that have left but are still on there, and we know that those people have been replaced, so I'm sure they're on the retirement system that way. And we've identified people who, their circumstances have changed and would like to take advantage of the retirement work before they didn't need to. The other big aha moment was that, you know, this really being about our tutors, our paras, we were trying to solve short-term problems, which is causing the retirement board to long-term problems. So it's trying to keep a delicate balance. When you look at the numbers, FTEs is from teachers. FY17, October 1, we are still down 18 classroom teachers. Tutors, we have added 19 tutors over the year span. Our paraprofessionals, the paras have come down, FTEs slightly higher, but we continue to come down in the para realm. UNB is declining slowly. Our enrollment is up. Since FY17, we're 108 students from where we were, and if you look at the immense growth in special education and ELL, the needs are things that we hadn't planned for. From FY16, the L population has significantly grown. We could not anticipate what happened in the world, but we have been bringing students in and trying to put appropriate resources in place to make sure that students' needs are met every single day. So we encourage the work to keep it clean between our side and the city side, to make sure that we are accurately reporting who is coming into our district and why that is happening. I don't think we're 100% clean as of today, but I have asked my staff to keep communication open, and they're going to make themselves available. But at this point, every decision we make has to do with these numbers, and we're starting to burst at these seams. Any questions?
The numbers here for enrollment are October. We can't, we have a regional other October, so in terms of actual enrollment, but in terms of reporting.
Right, reporting is October 1.
You're, you're fewer kids than you.
Than we actually have. Right. As of October 1.
So in our retirement system, this is, this is non-teachers.
Right.
So as of today, in fact, we picked 10. So as of today, 34 non-teachers went off the rolls since July, January 1st. Then as of about 316, there's 85 non-teachers that have been added to the retirement rolls. So if they weren't before, maybe they were working part-time.
Yep.
They're now full-time. And this is something that, this is why we need the information, and you just started talking. You've done a lot a little amount of times, so that's been good, but it's important because, for a couple of reasons. One is, we need to know this, because every single one of these people, we're picking up 85 non-teachers, even if they're temporary. And this is just, you know, we said, we're just hiring them acting a temporary. After they've been on the system for just several weeks, we now own them. We owe them unemployment benefits, and they're now entitled to health insurance and retirement if they're here long enough. So that's what we've got to figure out. If we lost 34, how do we pick up 85 new people to the rolls? And that doesn't involve teachers.
And we have that same question.
Right.
Because the numbers are not aligning with what we've done for hires.
Right.
So that's why I'm watching Jen, we're flipping through.
Get it, get it.
We're pulling every number, so we're going to continue to talk to board in the office and make sure that we know what we're talking about.
Right, I think when you gave me these, right, these notices.
Yes.
So eventually we'll figure out, but the bigger picture is, I think we've got to communicate. There are people in the community that still think that we laid off like 200 teachers, or 100, or 50, and we didn't. And we're, and we're down to 18. But what people have to understand is, that 18 should have been a process of elimination for many years. So as, so those adjustments should have been made right along, not waiting till one year and made that adjustment. So in terms of everything, in terms of the numbers that we report to the state, the enrollment numbers, we're at where we shouldn't be. If you, if you take into consideration, if you're going to add the other students, then what I'm saying is, you have to take into consideration elimination of certain programs that should have been eliminated as the, as the money started to wean off of the Obama stimulus money. No adjustments were made. We didn't eliminate any programs, we didn't eliminate any teacher positions, we didn't eliminate any paraprofessionals, no tutors, nobody. So at the end of the day, what it looks like is, there are more, I guess, paraprofessionals or tutors, and there are 18 less teachers, but there are more tutors and, there's more support for the teachers. That's, and so at the end of the day, we have to communicate a message, because when it comes to school choices, people start thinking about leaving the system. We have to make sure we say to them, yeah, we did talk about this many. That's the number that's, that sticks in people's minds. We have to communicate properly the numbers, the real numbers, which are, which aren't 50, or even 35, and certainly not 200. That has to be communicated.
But one of the, one of the pushbacks right now, just because of the influx of these students, the displaced students will be impacting our bottom-line numbers. So that October 1 number is actually going to go up.
That's all over the state.
Right, but I'm just saying foundationally, we have to account for those students back into our numbers. So to say that our enrollment is, we're not way down, because we just uploaded our first data report to the state for, there's a window from October 2nd to March 31st to account for 68 students, I believe, are coming back onto the roster. There's more coming in. So the enrollment isn't down as much as it appeared on October 1st, because we are now allowed to account for those students coming in. So there is some flux.
But had not been for those students, we'd be down in our enrollment.
Right.
But we didn't change our staffing levels. So where we didn't hire teachers, we picked up in paraprofessionals and support for, where are, I don't know. Let me decrease. So we've hired, where we've hired is areas like ABA tutor, ABA tutor, ABA tutor, SPED paraprofessional, SPED paraprofessional, paraprofessional. All of these people are new. I'm just saying, I think the message has to be, no matter what the numbers are.
But truly, they're not all new though. Some are replacement people, and so we've had people leaving our system, and we've had to replace those parents and tutors and some of the teaching.
Out of my idea, it's a layoffs, they just left for various reasons during.
That's what those people, that many of those peoples, we went through this list, are people who left the system, they got another job, so somebody gets a job in Bloomberg, they left. They come off that. They weren't laid off.
Right.
They left.
Right, and then we had to replace.
But the reality is, people in the community think we laid off 200 people. We didn't. I don't argue with semantics and numbers. My job's to communicate a clear message as to what the picture is. Yes, enrollment is growing, dealing on October. Yes, but we did lay off 200 teachers. We're down 17 or 18. But where we, where maybe we haven't piped back, there was some absorption, absorption in, in different programs that we never eliminated. Other school systems adjust yearly. We never did. We just kept the same on of staff. We never adjusted. As money ran out of programs, the stimulus money ran out, we never backfilled it with money, we never backfilled it with, well, we backfilled it with money, clearly, but we never backfilled it with, we never, we never adjusted the numbers of staff. So we need that bottom-line number, which communicates the final, you know, sort of the reconcile in numbers to say, this is where we were, this is where we are now. And we haven't got there yet, there's still some work.
Because we have, I have to correct three things. We did lay off 200 people and hired most of them back, so it is not incorrect to say the 200 were laid off.
You get layoff notices.
Yes. We're laid off. Well, it is, they're laid off until we, until we change our minds and rehire them.
Layoff is when they go off the system.
So the semantics, the bottom line is that we have recalled a good portion of those staff members, and most of them were teachers.
They sent out 200 notices to people, 200 notices that they didn't have to send out, that they decided that anybody that wasn't tenured was getting a notice.
Right, we had to do that.
They weren't laid off. They weren't laid off, they would have had to go to the unemployment office and, and file for unemployment. They didn't.
Right, because most of them, we brought back before that, before they got to that. It is the case that we did, we are, did start the year down 35 teachers. You did say not 35. We were down 35 teachers initially. We've hired some back because of the money that was moved in the school committee member meeting in December, which is, so we're back up to 438. So now we're down, was that 18 instead of 35? But it was 35 to start the year. Finally, the most important thing is, our enrollment is not down. Our enrollment for, our official October 1 enrollment for this year compared to last year is down only 14 students. However, we have 32 more English language learners than, here, no, sorry, I got the wrong two. We're up 133 English language learners, we're up 129 economically disadvantaged students. They cost more. So if you, one way to count them is simply to count them by how much more they cost. If you adjust that way, we actually have higher enrollment. And that's as of October 1st, as we have on this report here, we're up 116 students since October 1st. Our enrollment now is higher than it was last year. It is not down.
But if kids have special needs, that's where the formula comes in, where you get more money for those students.
That's right.
And I didn't say there wasn't 35 less kids. I just said at the beginning of the year.
Right, I just, I wanted to make sure that it is clear, that our enrollment is not down now, it is up.
Right, I didn't say it wasn't. I said in terms of October reporting in the rollables. And all I'm saying is, we all have a public message, which is the real story. We did lay off 200 people. We never sent people to the unemployment office, we did send 200 people. The reality is, it's our job to communicate the final message, right? And I said this a long time ago, it's going to take a long time to figure this out. And at the end of the day, when we reconcile this, there's a final message, and that's our responsibility is to communicate to the public, so they understand. We put a lot of time and effort at City Hall in putting a plan together that bailed us out, put a lot of money. The reason we were able to transfer funds from one account to the other is because we put money in there for the unemployment, close to a million dollars. We didn't end up using it, that was allowed to be carried over to other places. So at the end of the day, a final message is what these need to communicate.
Right, and I think we repeatedly have said that we have hired most of those staff back who have gotten those slip notices, so hopefully people are well aware of that. Wendy?
So if we're going to talk about crafting a uniform message, I think we need to be very careful, and we've all agreed publicly that we wanted to. very careful, and we've all agreed publicly that we wanted to, you know, with the new year, we wanted to start fresh and rebuild that, to do away with that perception that we were dysfunctional. Our job is to craft messages to the schools, not to the city side, so I think we need to be very careful in separating that. I think we need to keep in mind, some things are not just semantics. And if you were one of those two hundred people who got that notice, it felt like a layoff. You didn't know right away, and some people didn't know till well into the summer if they were coming back or needed a job. So I think we need to be careful how we, you know, what kind of semantic game we play with that, and be very clear that even though maybe by a definition, dictionary definition of layoff, they didn't get laid off because they didn't have to go file for unemployment or whatever, it felt like a layoff to them, and we lost some people because they didn't know in time if they were going to come back and they needed to accept job offers. So I think we need to be careful on how we word that. If you got that letter, you felt laid off, and it doesn't, you know, so we can't discount that, because that's just starting off this new start we're all trying to make here, in a way that makes our staff feel disrespected. The other, the final point on that I would like to make is that, you know, our, I think I'll just leave it at that, thanks.
Yeah, so with all due respect, the reason I'm here is because of the real story. The real story is, my mom was one of those people who got one of those letters. She cried, she looked for other jobs, she got hired at Southbridge, and she got hired back the week before school started. So if you're one of those people, that's your livelihood. And it may, they may not have been laid off, but why wouldn't they go somewhere else? They don't trust us anymore. So we have to be very careful with how we word things, we have to be very careful with the message we put out, and we need to kind of put that behind us, not think about that anymore, and build up. We need strong staff, strong students, strong buildings, strong admin, strong superintendent, strong school committee, we need to be unified, we need everyone to work together and put the past in the past, and let's move forward in better.
Okay, listen, you all may have a different style of working, I appreciate that, that's fine. I'm just saying, I have a responsibility, took an oath, I have a responsibility. There are people I talk to every day of the week that thought, that have been contemplating whether or not they're going to send their, you know, their kids somewhere else. It happens every year, every year. They start thinking about, my kid's in the eighth grade, where am I going to send? My kid's in parochial schools, it's eighth grade, am I going to send them to public schools? I have a responsibility to communicate a accurate message to them. And if, and if in the conversation, they think, okay, because they can't keep score like us. They hear things, they read things, they see things on social media, information, it gets very jumbled. So people don't know what to think. So my responsibility is to say to them, no, listen, first of all, some of those teachers, some of this should have been through absorption, we should either move those people around or not, but we're down, and the message that we can communicate is a happy one, maybe seventeen people shouldn't be gone, but there are seventeen people that are, that aren't teachers anymore. But there's more help in other places. And until somebody can tell me where these people came from, and nobody has, there are thirty-four people that come off the retirement rolls, and then we hired eighty-five non-teachers back to the system. That's a pretty good message. I don't know why people don't want to tell anybody that, because it's a really good message, and I think that will help people to consider whether or not make a decision on whether they can keep the kids here or not. I don't know why nobody wants to share facts, like, are we afraid of the fact that, we want people to think that two hundred people laid off?
I don't think so, and I think, you know, we've been talking repeatedly about, you know, that we have, we hired people, that we do have support staff, and that we're working very diligently on making a very responsible budget.
Well, then, then we should go on record.
So I don't disagree with your stance that we need to present the positive things that are happening and how we come back from this. I just think we need to be very mindful in not disrespecting what the people who are here have gone through and how they felt when we're crafting that message. When we say that those were letters that didn't have to go out, they did. We had a contractual obligation to notify staff by a certain day that they may not come back. Did we know that all of those people were gonna, not all of them were going to go? Yes, but we still had to notify them, so we, it wasn't, we didn't do it for kicks, we did it because we had to. I think while we craft this message, most of those people came back and things are moving forward, and we're building a bigger, better, you know, we're doing things better and differently, and you should consider keeping your kids here. As a parent, that's a message I want to hear. As a school committee member, I want to help craft that message. But we have to do it in a way that respects what our staff and our families have gone through, so not discounting that. And when we say things like, we sent out letters that we didn't have to, or only this many people are gone, or these many people weren't laid off, it sort of discounts the trauma that our district is healing from. And I just want us to be aware of that, respectful of that, as we move forward with this better message. That's all I'm saying.
I never said I disrespected that. I talk, anybody who called me, who was getting laid off, I talked to everyone.
I understand that.
I met all along in the process with the union, I did everything I can.
I'm not discounting that.
Our administration sat all through the summer to put a plan together that bailed us out, okay? That, and it worked. And that's just the way we are now.
I'm not discounting that.
And we have a responsibility, if you don't want to share in that, that's fine. But I'm just telling you.
That's what I'm saying.
In the chair.
Hold on.
Excuse me, I have the floor.
Excuse me.
I have the floor. I have the floor.
At this point, we're not going to go back and forth with each other, you both have very valid points, and I think that everybody recognizes that on the city side, you put a lot of effort in over the course of the summer to get us back to solid footing where we could proceed with this year's school year, and that was in jeopardy. And I think we can all acknowledge that the city, you know, did, you know, really sit down and roll up their sleeves and work with us to make that happen. So no one's discounting that.
And I'm agreeing with that. I just want to be respectful of the people who are still here.
But I don't want, I think we got that message loud and clear, I don't think it's helpful for us to be back and forth with each other.
Okay. And just saying, you can either be part of that message at the end, when this is all reconciled, I feel the obligation and responsibility to communicate that message.
I know, I think this is, I agree with you. Nobody's disagreeing with you.
If you don't, and then nobody does, that's fine. But I'm just telling you, I feel an obligation to do that, and that's my plan to do that. And you can be part of it, and you don't have to be part of it. I can do it, not because I'm the person on the school, on the school committee, but I can do it in my other role. And I'm just saying, I think as a unified approach, we should collectively be putting that message out to parents, saying, we've been through a lot, but we're in pretty good shape.
I don't think anybody's disagreeing with that.
Okay.
Does anybody else have anything else they'd like to add?
I just want to say, I think we are putting that message out, right? I think everything that we have done this year is putting that message out loud and clear. Loud and clear.
I think we're all very proud of our school system.
I think we've come a long way.
Right, and we have very talented teacher and other personnel within our school system, and we've got very motivated students and very active community, so we're grateful for all that, and we're looking to move forward and making those changes.
All right. Superintendent?
Great. And we'll continue to present monthly staffing reports to the school committee, so that you see who is and isn't in the district. Just know that this is a major part as we are starting to craft our FY19 year. I'd like to ask Melanie Michaels to come to the microphone. One of the things that I put forth in my initial plan was to make sure that everything was transparent and that we were communicating clearly. Melanie is new, did you come right before me or right this week?
December.
Yeah, right after me. She has become our Munis group. And Melanie and the business team, myself, members of the finance team, I would say we're meeting at least six days a week to make sure our numbers are what they are. So very strong communication. I did ask that Melanie tonight, just give a snapshot, just for this sample of Munis, the layered effect of what Munis provides us as we're going through every item. We have broken this down to the individual piece. What we have discovered through this process is, if you are not clear about the question you want answered, you can get lost in the process. So we are available to answer questions, but just know what it is that you want us to search. So this is just a sample document tonight, and I really appreciate you coming here and working with us.
No problem. Thank you. As Paula said, I'm part of the solution, right? So I'm here to help Dean, Mayor, do his thing and put out a positive message. So my message is transparency. We're going to show everybody that we have nothing, there's nothing hiding in the numbers, there's nothing in there that shouldn't be in there, and that we are going down and looking at every number as far down as we can get into the system, okay? If you look at what I've given you for the sample documents, did I see, the first page, you guys should be familiar with, you've already seen it at a previous meeting. And it's a document that us and Michael have put together in order to give you a snapshot of the preliminary fiscal nineteen budget, as well as where we are today and where we were last year, okay? So it's broken down by DESI code function, and you can see, I've kind of highlighted a few numbers there, which I have taken as our example, okay? I'm going to show you, I'm going to walk you through just a very quick synopsis of how far we can dive into the system. Munis is a great system, you just have to know how far to go with it. So if you look at your first A on the, on the page, that number there, what I do is I run a report through Munis, and that report is on the next page, it's your salary report, your year-to-date salary report, and you're going to see the DESI code for the two thousand. This is what I've chosen to show you. Each DESI code is attached to somebody who's being paid or a group of people that are being paid. So if you look down, you're going to see the A ties right into that first page. So where do I get that number? I get the number from Munis. It's as simple as that. I can even drill it down even further, right? So I then pick DESI code 2340 librarians. It's an easier, easier thing to pick, obviously, teachers, there's a lot more that goes into them when it comes to longevity, entitlements, and, you know, all that other stuff. So I chose the librarians, which, if you take the B number, I can run another report through Munis and drill it down even further, go to the next report, the next salary report is driven down further. So now I'm showing you librarians who are paid through the salaries to the system by school. So your F 102340 is Paula, your J is Johnny Appleseed, your M is Skyview, I know it's weird that it is. It took me a couple days to get used to it. So regardless, I'm showing you this because transparency is very important this year. After last year, we want to make sure that everybody understands, you can't hide anything in the numbers. I can't fudge the numbers, I can't put somebody in there and not have it be transparent. So if you go to C, you're going to see the librarian Johnny Appleseed, that's her salary, okay? You drill down even further, the next report, it shows you every payment that she's received, every warrant that she's, that she's been cut a paycheck, it shows you how much. And now you want to know who that person is, I can drill down even further, we keep going. So the system ties every number to a name, okay? So her payroll is the 250512, every bi-weekly period. Look to the last page, and I drill down to exactly who that person is, I know exactly when she's paid, I know exactly how much she gets paid. That's how we build our budget this year, okay? I build it off of actual information. So if you guys have any questions, anybody who I know, not everybody I've met here, but I have met some of you, I am more than willing and I'm more than happy to come right into the business office, drill down, say, what is that DESI code and what are we paying with it? I can do the exact same thing with the expenses. This is an example of the salaries, you know, you know, drilling down into a salary, but we can do the exact same thing with the expenses, it's just that I'm drilling down into a vendor. I've gone as far as to go back and look historically for the last four to five years. I know who's getting paid, when they're getting paid, how much they're getting paid. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Just want to point out that Melanie is a product of Lone Star High School.
And to go even further, I went to Gallagher High School. Middle school. I think full circle.
Sitting in your own classroom, I think?
Uh, no, but the office is definitely, it's not, it's a decent office, I like it.
And we are running the hallways.
Yeah.
I don't know if I've talked to the business office as much as I have in the past five months. We're dreaming in DESI codes right now.
Yeah. If I had my Fitbit on, it would tell you exactly how many times I've walked the hall.
But our office is open, and it's a daily, it's a daily dialogue, because we are carefully crafting every number.
All the way down. So Mayor, if you have any questions, please involve me in the numbers, because I, that's my job.
I think, you know what report would be good? Is, is I noticed in a lot of the purchasing that I see on the Munis system.
Sure.
That's another thing that I think we've got to communicate is, we've made a lot of purchases that we didn't exactly make it apparent that we were going to make during the course of the year. Good finance, good practice, but I think that's another area that we've got to communicate is, we're buying things, we're investing in the schools. I don't know that we've, or at least, it's not the perception I get, is that people think we're investing in the schools.
Okay, well, we don't, I certainly want your perception to change.
Yes.
So the best thing for you and I to communicate is, if you have specific areas in mind, it's a great idea for you to say, what about this part of, you know, part of the expense budget?
Right, I can see those things.
Okay.
I think we as a committee need to see, here's what we've spent our money this year. Not everybody's an auditor that gets to see that. I get to see these things through the system, but I'm just saying, I think people would be pretty impressed to see the amount of money we spent and where we spent.
Sure.
Right, and I think, again, you know, everyone thinks, everyone knows the same story. And with information today, it gets scattered and diced and sliced. When you get into Munis, there's only one story.
The numbers are the numbers.
But I know my job as leader of the city is to communicate the right story. And so when I talk to parents who have a misconception of what's going on, it's my responsibility to kind of correct that.
Absolutely.
But I think we spent a lot of time in our meetings talking about a whole lot of things, and I just think that we should have an overview of kind of where we've spent our money, on the expense side. I know we talked about salary, musicians.
Yeah.
But we, as I see the purchase orders go through, we're spending a lot of money, millions.
Well, we're, yeah, I mean, every, every school committee does.
No, no, but I'm saying, we are.
Right.
And that's another good communication to get out to the public is, we are investing in schools, the classrooms, kids.
I would love to share a lot of the expense side with everybody.
Ten thousand foot viewer, you know, like the kinds of things that we've invested. We don't have to get into the finite details.
You don't want to drill all the way down?
No, no, I don't need to know the code number on a PC, I just need to know that.
So you need to know that we're investing in, whether it's textbooks or, you know, computers or whatever it is.
And that's what we use Munis for, is to kind of keep an overview of everything.
Right.
Makes sense, it tells, we use Munis to tell a story.
Absolutely.
So it's data-driven decision-making, Munis is one tool that we use, but there are others, right? We have other data we collect from all the areas, but it's helpful sometimes. I try to communicate to the public, we want to find, we want to BBW truck, we're investing here.
Sure.
Catch bases, we did it only a year. I think that's another key piece of information the committee needs, so we can better communicate that we are investing in our buildings, in our schools, in our kids.
Sure, I, we'll look into that, hopefully that's what I found.
Great, thank you very much.
And hopefully our heating bills are down this year.
Yeah. We can only hope, but with more snow, I'm not sure.
I just want to add that Melanie's been very helpful in our process of getting the budget together and making sure that everybody on finance understands, really good at answering questions and explaining the numbers, so. I just wanted to publicly thank her for, for doing her job well.
For doing my job.
Thank you, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, so now we're on to FY19, FY19 budget discussion.
All right, so we got a preliminary version of, the first draft of preliminary budget was handed out two weeks ago, we have an updated version in front of us tonight. The preliminary version was pretty thorough on the wages and salaries side, but was definitely, expenses side was, was numbers prior to, it was from back in January, before Superintendent Deacon had met with principals and priorities been sorted out. So at this point, we think everything is there. Melanie, Melanie's gone over this with a fine-tooth comb, we're pretty sure that we've captured everything. So the FY17 actuals column matches what Munis has for FY17. The FY18 revised column matches what Munis has for this year as, that was March 14th, I think? No, March 12th. Is that the report that we got?
March 12th, please ask.
Whatever the last, the finance meeting did, right? Last week?
They wouldn't change what more.
No, no, they haven't changed.
Many things happen, we won't change much. It matches the last UNIS report we had. The FY19 are our best projections of what we need for next year. Broken down by category for both wages and salaries and expenses, all summarized on the first page at the top. There are, of course, assumptions that go into this, as there always are. We, in the how we're gonna fund this on the first page, we've used the state chapter 78 from the governor's preliminary budget. That could change if the legislature and the government do that. Probably won't change much. There's a required local contribution from the chapter 70 process. We are anticipating, we have anticipated amounts for display student aid, school choice, circuit breaker, Medicaid reimbursement. Of course, these things are all outside of our control, so should one of those things change, then we would have to adjust further. The fifth page is the portion of the budget that is separate from net school spending, which is really just the transportation and crossing guards. Broken that down as best we can into what the law requires us to do, which is the top half, which is the special ed transportation and the K through six transportation. We projected that that, an initial projection is that we'll take 20 buses, so that would be $4,072,000 for next year. And bottom portion is what we aren't required to do, which is by law, which is the crossing guards and the seventh grade through 12th grade. We, of course, think we should have crossing guards for safety, and we think that we should transport seventh graders through 12th graders, but the law doesn't require those. So it's an extra $881,759 for those two portions of that. So if you put this all together, we are pretty sure that we've done, we've got everything accurate, matches what's in UNIS, matches projections for next year based on UNIS, adequately funds things. It was the unanimous recommendation of the finance committee that we put this forward for the whole school committee and the public to consider. I think we're ready for questions.
Where are we with our circuit breaker? What's our balance on the circuit breaker? Do we know approximately?
Zero. Use it all?
Use it all. And the school choice?
So $200,000 for that one school choice.
How much? A few dollars? What's a few mean? A few is two?
Three.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any answer questions? Ron, Cody?
I'll see, Donna? Just a minute.
Oh, yes. The page that's half blue and half red, the budget is presented maintains current staff and adds a few, the ones that are in blue. Administration has requested addition of three deans for safety, a librarian at the high school needed for accreditation, art music teachers for, I think that's for Skyview, right? And the health teachers were for both middle schools. Maybe I should let you explain the rest.
So, yes, two to four, we want to bring back the equity between Sunset and Skyview, but our music back, health in the middle school really is a priority, so we're hoping that we can put those positions back. We still need some elementary teachers to either address our ELL growth or the classroom size to make it a better learning environment. There are still special education positions for full compliance that we need. The ELL director is a compliance. There are new regulations around ELL, we don't have a director. We need to, we have to have one for next year. We need a director of digital literacy. Our team is down to a handful of people, and we are outsourcing just to sort of maintain our infrastructure and move us in the right place, but we only have that through the rest of this year. So for next year, we need a director and a network manager. We need maintenance on what we are currently using. And at the bottom of the list, an assistant superintendent to help support district efforts as we move forward. So those are currently in the budget that is presented this evening. Moving forward, we would surely love more, we need more secretaries at our school at some point. We need to continue to grow our special education, more ELL teachers if our, if our population is growing at the rate that it's growing currently. CTI has asked for a counter-aid. There's a vulnerability right here when the restaurant is open to the rest of the school. It's not something that we're taking lightly right now. So that would be, it is not in the budget, but if it could be funded, we could level the funding field.
So all the things in the pink column are not already, not in our budget, but everything in the blue column is already in our budget?
That's right. The pink column represents things we would do if additional funds were available. These are the priorities that the administration has specified, should additional funds be available. The positions in blue are really necessary for various reasons, compliance, or things that we want, school committee actually, I mean, the last three positions, the school committee already voted in favor of as part of the superintendent's entry plan. I should also point out that particularly the director of digital literacy and the network manager, we took the money out on the expense side next year. There's money in the expense side this year that's paying for outsourcing of IT. We've taken that out for next year because we assume that these two positions will do that job. The job has to be done, so if we weren't to fund these two positions, we'd have to put money back on the expense side to continue outsourcing. We can't have an IT department that doesn't have anybody running it.
So we were asked to prioritize, so I'm looking at this, and that looks like the blue is the highest priority. Are they also listed in order of priority, so like in the additional needs not funded? But this, is this the order we would fill them as more funds became available?
One and two, for sure.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand how it was broken from.
Two questions. One, the bus, how many kids, how many, what's the?
There's what, like thirty? How many kids are in the capacity for the bus?
For that bus?
What size bus, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, what size is the bus?
A regular.
Seventy-one to eighty-four, but it would be used.
Slightly used bus.
Okay. And the sped fully funded, is that, maybe it's me, but sped fully funded means, it doesn't mean it's required, right?
It is.
By the federales?
It is.
So why is it in the pink versus the blue? Because if it's fully funded, it means it's a requirement. We have to spend that.
So we have put.
It's not wish to dream, it, we have to.
Let's let Polly.
So we, we have put some positions back this year around sped and compliance. We have also asked for an additional allotment. We have made movements within the district. Many of our teachers have dual certifications. If we could get even more funding, we could have people in their preferred tasks. So we've got to do more staffing around just to make sure that students' needs are covered.
But I guess, maybe it's me, I don't, maybe I don't understand my English. Sped, to me, translated, it's a requirement, fully funded, to mean that, that $500,000, it has to be spent for that. We don't have any choice.
True, we can keep building it, but we are making additional cuts and moves to cover to the best we can at this point.
So are we out of compliance with sped?
Not right now, but we're close.
Well, it depends on your definition.
Yes.
All right, okay.
We are technically not out of compliance.
I'm not doing, I'm not doing the definition. The federales are gonna come down and make that definition.
The sped numbers broken down here are at the recommendation of our.
No, I'm not quoting that, I'm just saying, you know, are we in compliance or out of compliance?
So right now, we're in compliance, but we need to continue to build compliance so we maintain compliance.
That's all I'm asking.
Anybody else? Cody as well? Sue?
Can I just say thank you to the finance subcommittee for this breakdown and the way this was presented? This has made it a lot easier to understand. So thank you for the work you guys put in.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, so on the contribution part, on the net school spending requirement?
Yes.
So then, just so we make sure everybody's understanding, because everything else is said here. So the addition, that the city's contribution will be, will be, I'm trying to make sure we get this, the microphone is off.
Yes, yes. So what we have requested is $342,523.01 above the required.
Is the required local contribution, the normal.
So.
That gets us to.
Right. So that breaks down as a total requested local contribution of $23,448,620. And that's assuming, my understanding is that you told us to use the same $5.6 million indirect charges for next year that we have this.
Depends, there may be some changes. Like trash recycling contract is all.
Is that all working out?
That's our best guess at this point.
That's good, no, just go with that.
So, again, that's, you know, there are, right? This is, the job of the preliminary budget again is to lay out what we expect our needs are.
So that.
If one of these numbers could.
It can change, it can change right up until July or August.
Our mayor will make a reappropriation request of the city, and that's his choice, not ours. So if this local contribution is different, then we will have to have meetings afterwards to adjust. If the state changes what the chapter 78 is, I can't imagine they'll go down. Cross my fingers they'll go up, although I don't think they'll go up very much. We are getting the minimum from the state, so it's unlikely that we'll get much help in that respect.
So the amount that gets us to net school spending is, and if we haven't communicated that, so what's that number?
The net school spending requirement is the $72,940,000.
The difference, the difference. I'm just trying to make it simple, so as people watch this on TV, they'll all understand.
The difference between what the city is required to do and what we've asked for.
Oh, that's 342.
Right.
The amount that the city, the new amount.
Twenty-eight million, seven forty-five.
The difference between, no, it's more than.
Which number, I'm not sure which number you're asking.
The amount that gets you to net school spending, in other words, just that, that amount that gets you to net school spending.
Are you talking about the required local contribution?
Correct.
Yes, $28,745,315.
And the difference between that and last year?
Eighteen sixty-six.
Right, so around nine.
Yeah, nine ninety thousand dollars.
So the total amount, new money that the city would come up with is nine something plus 342.
Yes.
To get you where the recommended budget is.
Yes.
That's what I was trying to do.
Yes, yes. Okay, so one, roughly, I don't have the number in front of me, roughly 1.2 million increase over last year's.
Donna?
That doesn't include transportation.
Right.
Transportation, so. That's still spending.
What's the difference in last year? Are we still in contract with them, Glenn? Right, we still have another year?
Two.
I thought the other one was optional.
Yeah.
Now, what's the difference between last, this year we're in and next year's projections?
Yep, so that's, that's the last page, the.
Trying to get us to say it.
Yep, so our, our current expected total non-net school spending expenses for this year is currently projected at $4,847,994.05. That includes the $38,000 for the crossing guards, so, but almost all of that is the transportation.
Those titles are, need to be updated.
Yes, and Wendy caught that there's a typo on this non-net school spending page. The bottom portion, the expenses not required, should say FY18 projected and FY19 proposed, just like it has up at the top.
But you're projecting this, not much of an increase in terms of transportation.
Right.
Right, so the total proposed is, why don't you say that?
Right, so, yes, so the total proposed for transportation plus crossing guards is That include, that, that number, we believe at this point is sufficient to provide transportation to students in the same way that we do this year, same rules, all grades, and includes continuing crossing guards.
What titles need to be?
This is FY17 projected and FY18.
She said it with the crossing guard piece, so I was like, are we changing the name of our crossing?
It just has the wrong.
Yeah.
The school year.
Why change it down?
Hours and hours of work, and Wendy took one look at that type of. Didn't spend enough time on this page, apparently.
But I do think this is, you know, the clearest breakdown of all of our expenditures, both net school and non-net school spending, that we've had in a very long time. And it's, you know, I appreciate all of finance subcommittee, the administration that has been working tirelessly with this, finance subcommittee. It makes it much easier for us to, I think, articulate what our needs are and where our money is going, which I think is something that, you know, the mayor's been requesting for some time. And I think this is the best we've ever done.
And I appreciate it.
We'll be able to understand this. It's very clear, it's very.
Thank you very much.
So thank you for everyone's hard work. I know you guys have been meeting. We do appreciate it.
I just want to make sure, as we fund these things here, I know this is recommendations from the superintendent, which I'm not saying I disagree with or the committee, but I definitely, if I was sitting here putting priorities together, and this is just me, I'm, my personal priority is teachers in the classroom, that's my priority. And number one priority here is deans. And I understand safety and all that, but my number one priority is, this is a place of education, and my feeling is, if it's me that's gonna help fund some of these things here, I would have to say that, I would have to really be convinced that these are the priorities of the, of the school system. And not, and not, you know, that we're gonna put deans at the very top versus a, you know, a teacher or a special ed position or some of those. But that's open for discussion. I'm just kind of putting it, floating it out there that.
That's fine.
As I look at this, based on what I heard from last year's sort of, everyone's input for many months, that I definitely would have to be convinced that as we put future funding in here, that these are the areas that need to be funded.
Yeah, I don't mind having that conversation.
Yeah, but that's not a reflection on you or anybody, just, somebody else made this determination, it wasn't the full committee, I just want to make sure.
I just want to clarify that by putting the deans at the top, we took in account not only what happened at Parkland and what has happened for seventeen years. I didn't realize that it was seventeen years ago that Columbine happened. I find that remarkable that it's been that many years. But also hearing from parents that they want safety as a priority, they, they want those deans back in place.
Okay, I'll just.
No, I'm just letting you know that we'd have heard that that's a big concern.
This is, I don't know who was part of this decision-making, but I'm just saying, it wasn't the full committee, I don't think. Is that correct?
That's correct. But too, when you look at positions like this, Dean, I just want you to understand
and respect the fact that trying to put things from top down, when I go down like this with all of those, that's how I would have liked to have.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I definitely.
Don't take my comments as critical at all, I'm just saying, from a Vannish point, this is, this is a group of people's priorities, right?
But trying to establish a number system is really difficult.
Right, no, no, no.
Because this is a matter of things in order to move forward.
It's like having ten kids.
Well, I know. I know.
I'm just saying, this, this was a recommendation from whoever was on this committee.
Okay, and I appreciate everyone's comments. Is there anything else to focus on?
There is, and we've scheduled public hearings. So just ask people to, studies, if you have any questions, I think you have, let us know as you have them, right? Can't discuss opinions, but there's nothing wrong with saying what question do you plan to ask in advance so we can make sure that you have answers.
We're gonna put this up on the website, the proposed.
Yeah, this whole packet has been posted, yes. Probably.
And we'll just list it as proposed 2019, and after we vote on it, we put voted, you know, the question that's voted on by the school committee, and then later on in the school, go through the process.
Excellent. And transparency, I think, is our, you know, goal with everything, particularly the budget. So we move on to subcommittee reports. Wendy, policy?
Yes, okay, so the, tonight we're bringing forward a recommendation for the new, for next school year as far as fees. We are recommending, we can, I guess it came before us, there was some question on transportation fees. We want to continue that as is and make a change in the way, we're recommending a change in the way the extracurricular and club fees. We had it where there were exemptions for certain clubs and activities. We're recommending that as, as of the next year, there be no exemptions. It's the fee, it's per child, not per club, and we had, we've already put in place a staggered fee schedule, so we're just saying that we're not gonna do exemptions and that except in one case, if this budget doesn't go through the ways and we aren't able to fill those positions at the middle school and band and chorus, that music piece is not offered during the day in one school, but it is in the other, so only one school has to do it as an after-school activity. That would be the only exemption, and that's our recommendation going forward.
So we do need to vote on it?
Yes.
So would you like to make a motion to?
So I am making a motion that for the new coming school year, that except in the case of middle school music and band, if there's an equity issue. case of middle school music and band, if there is an equity issue, that all clubs and activities be included without exemption to the per child, not per club fee that we have set forward.
Do we have a second?
One second.
As well? All those, anybody questions, comments? Cody?
So, student government, kids that run for that, would we charge the fee before?
No, all clubs and activities except that equity issue of where one school had it as part of their school day and one didn't is, because honestly, I'll tell you what our thought process was. Every club and activity could come and sit before us and make an argument for why they should be exempt, and there's something worthy about all of them. We can't. It became problematic to have some and not others. Most, so, the solution is to have to do it this way.
And most kids, you know, students are involved in numerous, more than one, you know, activity, and it covers them all. But I do want to make sure that people realize that anybody who has any financial difficulties or a student that receives free or reduced lunch, there is an opportunity to have a one-on-one discussion with somebody.
Thank you. That, I, I've stressed that over and over, every time we brought this up, I, I forgot to say, but, so, thank you, Ellie. We, we have a different fee for the free and reduced lunch, and there is a process for talking to, on a case-by-case basis, for help or some sort of aid to that, but as far as exemptions is what we're addressing.
Yeah, that's great, that was going to be my next question, so, as long as, you know, we have that.
Yeah, I've, I've tried to stress that at every time we've had this conversation, and I'll continue to, you know, on a case-by-case basis, there is, there is recourse for help, but in, as far as the exemptions is what we're voting on.
Anybody else? All those in favor? opposed?
Two.
Okay, anything else from Policy Subcommittee?
No, that's it for today.
Okay, and the Finance Subcommittee?
I think, I think we've pretty much talked about it. We've had several meetings, we've produced a document, I don't know if there's anything else we need to break out.
Thank you.
I want to know where that penny came from.
I know.
That one penny. I'm going to give you ninety-nine cents.
If, if that penny is the sticking point, I promise to donate a penny.
No, 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 ninety-nine cents to make it even.
Melanie says it's a penny.
Well, we're down to...
I want to make sure you have the exact value.
Two, now, that makes it more complicated, now that's two.
It just, it worked out.
We need to have a straight and flat amount, yeah?
So, now, we're going to move on to approval of the minutes. Wendy, would you like to make?
I'll make a motion to approve the Fin, the Policy Subcommittee minutes from December 18th, 2017.
Do I have a second? Ron? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the next one. The regular school committee minutes from our last meeting, March 5th.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the March 5th school committee.
Do I have a second? Any errors or omissions? Okay, if none, any, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And that brings us to the end of that. Action items, we actually have a vote to accept the gift. Superintendent?
Yes, this is the additional information regarding the gift of lighting in the auditorium. We updated with a certificate of liability and a, an updated proposal from the church. The communication between the contractor and the school is also included, and we have a statement from staff saying that this would be an exceptional gift to help with their programming, whether it's theater and, and art or GS. So, they wanted me to know that this is in service of their programming as well, so, it's one of the good generous.
I'm, I'm hoping that we can get a vote to accept this gift. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the school committee accept the gift made from Excel Church.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any thoughts, questions?
I just have a question on the light fixtures. They're just letters from this event. It says the light, lighting fixtures will be, that will be purchased to hang on the pipe will remain the property of Excel Church. So, they're going to be taking, if they decide to go away from the school, they're going to leave the piping but take their lighting?
Yes, and we have lighting that fits it as well.
Yes, so we have our... So, the lighting's, our lighting isn't going to be up there, and we're going to be using the church lighting, and then if they leave, will put our lighting there? Or...
Yes.
Okay.
Their lighting is there.
Okay.
We'll have, we'll still have light.
Okay.
At their expense?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay, we have a motion, second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
I just want to ask a question. Would they pay us for rent? Does anybody know, I think? Is it by week or is it by year or?
Is it the regular rent?
Yeah, they pay the... It's similar.
Students pay, because they're nonprofit.
So, how much yearly?
Sorry.
And where is that? Where do those funds go?
For building, for buildings?
Right, there's a...
I know that.
I actually addressed that today.
We're putting it back into the school here, the buildings?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, but then there's also a fee on top of that, where we're tearing the building, raised eight hundred people inside the building.
Okay, we're going to move to, to new and rural business. One of the things that we need to address is the tutor contract. We have voted, discussed it at our last executive session, and at that time, we had told folks we would not be returning, so did not until the following in public, so we need to take that opportunity now to vote on the tutor's contract. Superintendent, do you have anything to... No, I'm ready to move forward with that. Okay, could I have a motion to accept the tutor's negotiated contract as stated?
So, move.
Second.
Okay, any questions or thoughts, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any other old business?
I just, sorry, no.
You notice that, Wendy?
Okay, just, we got a notice from Chris today about the open meeting law, a reminder that we need to, for those who have not signed up for it, to go online and sign up for it. The meeting is April 24th at the Lomond St. Library.
And that was something that we did agree as a whole committee that we would all go to?
And that's open to anybody. That's open to other people in the area, boards, commissions, everyone, not just...
Right, I actually have a conflict. I was at a meeting where we agreed to it, so I can try.
It was agreed to if you could, like, I said I might have to work, so, yeah.
I do have a conflict, so...
Yeah, we had, that was allowed for.
Any other...
I just wanted to let, remind people that on Friday night and twice on Saturday, the middle schoolers have been working very hard to get ready to put on the performance of The Sound of Music.
Just so you know, we said that first.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry, because there's a member of the cast sitting here, too, so, he's stuck there, so...
We did say that in the main meeting, but it doesn't help to remind people.
Okay.
But I just wanted to let you know we got it covered.
A proud parent of the member of the cast who's here, so I wanted to make sure I got a shout out. That's why I wasn't here, they were rehearsing and editing, so we picked up the cast number.
Great, so, do we have another scheduled meeting next Thursday? Because I know Mike said he couldn't go. Wasn't it Thursday, the 29th?
Yeah, so, I don't, that didn't get scheduled, right?
So, that's off the calendar? Okay, I didn't, was that communicating with the committee? It was...
Well, I'm looking at the...
Okay, because I knew you sent one out saying you can't make it, but I can't make it either, so, okay, it's off the calendar.
I just have one quick thing here for new business. We put a list together of all the activities the city is having and sent them to the superintendent, which I'm sure you'll circulate amongst the different schools. It's an opportunity to showcase talent, fundraising, whatever it might be, and so we wanted to give you the dates really early on so that if someone wants to participate, they can, so you should have gotten an email today.
That's great.
You get it early and encourage students and staff, faculty, and CTE still makes things in the woodshop, get a chance to put them out there for sale, all those good things.
Thank you, Dean. Anybody else for older new business? Okay, so, at this time, we do need to, what? Yeah. At this time, we do need to go into executive session, and we will not be returning. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session under Chapter 39 of the Massachusetts General Laws for contract negotiations, and we will not be returning.
And this is a voice vote? We'll start with Ron.
Yay.[1789.12]